For me?
Yeah.
I need some great questions for you.
For me?
Yeah.
You spent too much time reading.
I'm sure it doesn't change your mind.
Yeah. And don't do that again.
So you're going to do veterans first?
I did Kim Arnold's on, who's up to you, on Stanford Foundation. We get the five or three somewhere. Okay, good. We've got to cover those.
Okay, cool. Awesome. Thank you.
I'm here, she's there?
Okay, yeah, linking.
You've been here, I'm gonna, you're on Zoom.
Yes.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. It's great to see so many in here today. Welcome to the November State Board of Education meeting. We're going to start with a moment of silence. Thank you. We have two board members joining us via Zoom today. Adrienne and Kathy, can you hear us? Great. Thank you all. We get to start this morning in recognition of our veterans here and their spouses here at the agency. As Veterans Day is coming up this weekend, I would like to ask Darrell Farmer up to the podium, please.
Good morning, everybody. First, I want to thank all the veterans for their service and acknowledge them. So, but, first, I would like for you, once I call your name, to stand and afterwards come and take a group picture. First, Chris Abbott. Pamela Anderson. Ronnie Benjamin. Jennifer Bishop. Linda Billian. Clarissa Cassavere. Michelle Clark. Benita Flint. Julia Francis Rowland. C.W. Gardenhire. Winfrey Gates. Ken Gees Beck. Felicia Green. Monte Harrison. Ron Hibbs. Joy Jett. John Kabner. Michelle Johnson. Jerry Kiefer. Alisa Lambert. Carlton Lawyer. Sarah Lipsy. Onika Luster. Denise McCoy. Lynette Madison. Bridget Michelle. Tina Moore. Bobby Oly. Heather O'Shea. Alexander Pritchard. Tracy Soto. Clifford Thibodeau. Norman Vanderbilt. Kim Vogt. And Wesley Wilkis. Would you all please come up and let's take a picture?
Thank you. I guess everyone has already left the room, but that's amazing to see so many individuals that have served and so many families that have served, working here. So, thank you all for doing that. Up next in our agenda, we are going to have a proclamation to recognize Computer Science Week by Adam Musto.
Thank you, members of the board. I'm Adam Musto, the Director of Computer Science for Arkansas Department of Education. And thank you for giving us the opportunity to read this resolution to the board. Whereas the Arkansas State Board of Education believes that every student in Arkansas deserves a premier computer science and computing education that is suitable for his or her needs and can support his or her college and career aspirations. And whereas the Arkansas State Board of Education supports the state in its efforts to remain a national leader in computer science technology careers through the implementation of a vertically articulated and comprehensive computer science and computing education initiative designed to support appropriate technological growth in all Arkansas students. And whereas the Arkansas State Board of Education believes that Arkansas must provide its students with an education that will facilitate the advance of useful technological skills and promote their role as digital natives. And whereas Ray Montague, an Arkansas native, who was a national pioneer for women and women of color in engineering and computer sciences, created the first design of a U.S. naval ship using a computer. Whereas Grace Murray Hopper, one of the first females in the field of computer science, engineered new programming languages and pioneered standards for computer systems, which laid the foundation for many advancements in computer science. And whereas the week of December 4th through 10th, 2023, in honor of Grace Hopper's birthday on December 9th, is nationally designated as Computer Science Education Week. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the members of the Arkansas State Board of Education, in honor of both Dr. Grace Hopper and Dr. Ray Montague, recognize the week of December 4th through 10th, 2023, as Arkansas Computer Science Education Week. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing that. I learned a few things. And thank you for being here today.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, with that, is there any additional changes to the agenda? Okay, we will start our action agenda. Our first is a consideration of standards request for five school districts.
Good morning. Hope Arsham, Assistant Commissioner for Public School Accountability. So, we'll start with the first district that is requesting a standards for accreditation for standard 1.85, which is class size. And this comes from Malvern School District. They originally submitted a waiver request for class size and teaching load reduction. However, they're revising that to only request the class size waiver. They're going to compensate on the class teacher load at a per pupil rate for that high school teacher, rather than requesting waiver there. The superintendent is, I believe, online or here. If you have any questions for them, and the department has no concerns about this waiver.
Superintendent Blair, are you online? Or anyone else from Malvern? I don't see anyone at this time. Let's start with board member questions. To my right, Mr. Sutton.
Well, just with this being November and waivers just now being requested, is this because of just new enrollments that have happened?
The waiver request was received last month due to enroll, new enrolling statements, yes.
Mr. Henderson?
No.
Mr. Bragg? Ms. Sol? Mr. Brown? Any questions? Ms. Rollins or Ms. Woods, any questions? In that case, if we don't have any questions, do we need to wait on the school district? I think so. Okay. Okay, then we will go out. Should we go ahead and take a vote on each one of these individually, or all five as one? Doesn't matter.
Just all five?
Yeah. Let's just, can we go ahead and go through each one and then we'll?
Sure.
Do the next one.
Sure. The second request comes from the Guy Perkins School District. It's for class size as well, standard 1-8.5. The concern there is that they have students, they have expected enrollment growing in their district, and they are over their maximum class size in a second grade classroom. Again, requesting the waiver for one year, and the department does not have concerns for this waiver.
Okay, and I do see Dr. Fisher from Guy Perkins on Zoom. Thank you for being here today. Board members, questions? Questions? Mr. Wood and Sutton? Online questions? Dr. Fisher, is there anything you wanted to add to your letter?
No, we just appreciate it and excited that we're growing this year. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, the next one is from Concord School District. Same request, standard 1-8.5. They have one classroom that is over, over the maximum of 25 by one. So, the request is for a one-year waiver of class size to not hire an additional teacher in that area. And the department has no concerns on this waiver either.
And this is Concord School District. I believe I see Stephanie Langley, the principal. Are you on today?
Yes, ma'am.
Is there anything that you'd like to add to your letter?
Uh, no, ma'am. We just want, we're in the same, we're excited to be growing. Our student enrollment's up, and we were not expecting that. We're able to compensate in some classes by splitting the kids. We just aren't able to do that with some of our other classes.
Thank you. Board members, do you have questions? Mr. Sutton?
I'm with him.
Mr. Henderson, Mr. Bragg, any questions? Mr. Wood? Any questions? Online, Ms. Woods, Ms. Rollins, any questions? Okay, thank you. Then we'll move on to the Magnet Cove School District.
Fourth one is from Magnet Cove School District, requesting waiver of standard 1-8.5, class size. They had one student enroll after October 10th, and that has put them over in one of their elementary classrooms. Department has no concerns on this waiver either.
Is there anyone from Magnet Cove School District on? I don't see them. And if there was a question by a board member for a district not here, we could always pull it to get them later. So, keep that in mind. Questions? Mr. Henderson?
He doesn't really, unless I'm old and living, it doesn't say, you know, for one year.
Yes. Sorry, I should clarify that all of these are for one-year requests, yes.
Questions down here? Ms. Hunter?
Well, I'm kind of going back through the, I thought there was one that was just for the rest of the semester. Am I confused again? Oh.
That's a different one.
Wrong, wrong one. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Questions online, Ms. Rollins or Ms. Woods? Okay, then we'll move on to the Poen School District.
Last one's for Poen School District, request of a waiver 1-8.5 for class size. This is for kindergarten classroom. The slight nuance here is they have employed a paraprofessional in that room as well to help with the overage, which is required. And one-year waiver of class size for Poen School District. Department has no concerns with this waiver.
Is there anyone from Poen online today? Miss? Okay, but again, board members, if you have questions, we can pull them to come in later. Am I right, Mr. Sutton?
I'm with him.
Mr. Henderson?
No.
Mr. Bragg? By left? Any questions? Online, any questions? Okay. Last chance, is there any, any of these districts that any member would like to pull? If not, the floor will be open for a motion, and we can batch them all together unless there's one that wants to be pulled.
I'll make the motion to approve the waivers.
For all five?
Yes, ma'am, for all five.
There's a motion to approve the waivers. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Mr. Bragg. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Washington. Next, we have a request for Act 1240 waivers from the Bauxite School District. Ms. Sarah Seamy, thank you.
Good morning. Assistant Commissioner Educator Effectiveness and Licenseur. And this morning, Bauxite School District is asking for the waiver 6-17-812, teaching load, just for a semester. This is the one, Ms. Hunter. And hopefully, this, you will see less and less of these as we put in that aspiring teacher permit. Again, Bauxite has kind of gotten caught in EPPs. Our higher ed hasn't really implemented everything necessary for that aspiring teacher permit. And so, students have to have their assessments taken a little bit early. And these people are ready. They have moved staff around to make sure that they have that mentor with that intern, and we have no concerns.
Stephen, do you want to give the overview of the 1240 process? Thank you.
Good morning. Stephen Reynolds, Staff Attorney for the Department. So, this is the standard Act 1240 process. The school district will get 20 minutes to present its case. I don't know of any opposition. They would get 20 minutes if that were the case. And then, the board will vote on the waiver. And you get, you can ask questions at any time. And then, the school district wants the board, if the board approves the waiver, wants to, the school district must post it on its website pursuant to the law. And I think we've got a presentation from the school district, and the representatives from the district are here, so.
And just to be, I need to swear in the district's.
Yes, thank you for reminding me.
Superintendent Donaghy?
Yes.
Thank you for coming in today.
Thank you.
If you don't mind, whoever's on your team is going to be speaking. I'm going to have you all do the oath today.
Well, this is Ms. Kim Arnold. She's our middle school principal. This is Doug Quinn, Deputy Superintendent. It's his birthday today, 36, so. And Becky Reynolds, our elementary principal. So, they're here with all the details, if you have questions. And we don't want to real-
I'll go ahead and swear you all in, and then you can get started. If you hold up your right hand, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Thank you.
So, as they kind of said a little bit earlier, we're in a situation where we needed to hire two educators kind of at the last minute. And I know you had a good question earlier about why we're waiting until November for a situation that will be resolved in, at the end of December. But this is a process that we started when we realized we were going to need some more teachers. And I started corresponding with their professors at their, and their, their guidance counselors at their various universities on August the 1st, when we realized that we were going to have a shortage. And so, these are two wonderful people. One has been a mother of students in our district for a while, and it's been really nice this year to walk into her classroom or see the kindergartners walk into her classroom, and she's just so friendly and welcoming and has that fire to teach. And her students love her, and as you can see by some of the comments from the parents and such, they're really enjoying their time with her. So, we're excited to have her. You know, the one, Blake Garrett, was actually a middle school student for us when I got to Bauxite. So, it was neat to see him grow, and we know his work ethic and his family, and he had a strong desire to become a teacher even when he was in high school. So, it's neat to kind of see him live out his dreams. So, we've got two really wonderful people that we're excited to have on staff. But unfortunately, they're supposed to be doing their student teaching this semester, but we needed them in the classroom. And I wish we weren't in this situation. I still remember 30 years ago, being a student teacher in Ms. Tammy Morris's third grade class at Cersei McCray Elementary, and just how excited I was. And all, all the wonderful things I learned from her about classroom management and lesson plans and all those things that you, that most of us who are educators still remember. So, it's too bad that they're skipping this part, because I think when you skip certain things, you miss out on some perspective and just some important steps. But I do believe that with the support that the district is providing for these two, and also their universities, Arkansas Tech and UALR, that these two will be very successful. So, I don't want to waste a whole lot of your time this morning, but I'll go to the second slide. Do I have a clicker? Let's see if it works. Made a ding.
See if it's on on the side.
It appears to be. Try again. Oh, I thought I did something. Ah, thank you so much. Okay, thank you. I am not the tech director in our district. You can see why. So, our first request is, was brought about because we had a teacher leave us very, very late in the summer, and we shifted around some positions to try to get as many certified people in their proper areas. And we were hopeful that we would be able to find an eighth grade social studies teacher, because in the past, social studies teachers were fairly easy to find. But unfortunately, we found out that we weren't, there just weren't any applicants and weren't any that were certified. And so, we, that's when we found Blake Garrett, who was, and what we're asking for is to allow a mentor teacher to serve as the teacher of record for his own classes and the eighth grade class that Mr. Garrett is teaching in social studies. And he's supposed to be an ATU intern. The second one was opened up because a neighboring school district opened up a brand-new school. We always, we always assume that we're going to get a lot of kindergartners in August that come in and register at the last minute. But we had extenuating circumstances this time because a new elementary opened, and they were checking residences and such like that. So, we got an extra-large influx of new kindergartners, and that required us to hire a new teacher. So, we'd like to allow a mentor teacher to serve as- So we'd like to allow a mentor teacher to serve as the teacher of record for her own class, plus a kindergarten class taught by the UALR intern. Both interns were hired by the Bockside School District and are on teacher contracts. Uh-oh. Do you mind talking for me too? And there we go. Thank you, thank you. So the district is providing support by having daily planning and check-ins with the mentor teacher. They have weekly PLC meetings, administrative support, novice teacher mentoring with Dawson Co-op, and job admitted professional development. The universities, Arkansas Tech and UALR, are providing internship supervisors to guide the students. Both have an assigned field coordinator specific to their placements, who connect the interns to offer needed resources and serve as an intermediary between the university and the Bockside School District. Interns are required to complete professional development. The last one, thank you. Obviously, you all know there is a teacher shortage. There's a shortage across all occupations. I was surprised to read that there's a physician shortage last night, so it's hitting all of us. Vacant teaching position at the middle school, causing shifts in certified personnel, a high number of late kindergarten enrollment at Pine Haven Elementary. We had a low number of applicants, and they weren't certified. These two interns came very highly recommended from ATU and UALR. And the waiver is only needed for this semester that we're currently in, and both interns will graduate in December and become the teachers of record. And again, I've got people who can answer specific questions if you have them. Otherwise, we'd appreciate your support with this.
Thank you. Board members, I'll start to my right. Mr. Sutton, questions?
No ma'am.
Mr. Henderson?
No.
Mr. Bragg? Ms. Rollins? Ms. Rollins?
I did, I just had one question. Is the only thing lacking from the requirements for the license, the internship? Or is there still praxis to take? Are there, it's just the internship?
Vermont in particular, she has already taken past all of her praxis.
Okay.
So all she has to-
Do you mind coming up to the microphone?
Oh, sorry.
So that online can hear as well.
We were just chatting. Thank you.
Vermont in particular, she's already passed everything. All she has to do is graduate. She did internship last semester of last school year for us, and so she only had one internship left, which was going to be at our school anyway, and we were very pleased with her internship in the spring of last year. And so she was going to finish her fall semester with us anyway as an internship. And so that's one reason we were so pleased with her. My intention was to go ahead and hire her when she graduated, but we just did it a little early.
Great, thank you.
She's going to graduate in December and be ready to go.
Perfect.
Our middle school social studies teacher, he's still working on his praxis.
Okay, and that support will come from the Co-op?
He is. He's working with Archford.
Perfect. Okay, great. Thanks.
More questions? Ms. Woods? Ms. Rollins? The board members? Okay, I do have a question for Carly, if you don't mind, of the agency.
Yes.
So we have in the past approved this waiver for how many school districts? Do you know?
In the past, it's been those school districts that have been working with UA Fort Smith on their residency program, and now with the aspiring teacher permit, this should eventually not be needed. Again, like they said, they're just missing some things, and the aspiring teacher permit in the future will be able to meet that need. But the EPPs are going to have to look at their programs a little different on when they're taking those assessments, so that they're all ready before that semester.
Is there any requirements as far as how much classroom time they've had before reaching this point in their?
They have to have all coursework done, completed.
I mean, I guess being class, school, time in schools.
Oh, time in schools, yes, yes. That, now that we're going to a year-long residency by twenty twenty-seven, most have had about six weeks, and I'm assuming that's what she had. That's common. Some have eight weeks, but it, it's equivalent to two to three days a week in the classroom. It depends. A lot of times, whether it's elementary or secondary, but it's usually the equivalent time of six, six weeks.
Okay, and so they would have that six weeks before entering this?
Yes ma'am.
But I, this seems like a situation where we're having to be reactionary to vacancies. Is there a way that district, to prevent this in the future and that districts are not having to look for teacher ad, you know, candidates?
Well, right now, we're not producing enough of educators, and we are working on that as best that we can. And I think with the salary increase, you're seeing some come in through that non-traditional route. I hope that, hopefully, in the very near future, you will not see us coming up here and asking for a class size or a teaching load waiver. Because I really feel with the aspiring teacher permit and things being put in place and that year-long residency, we'll have people ready for the classroom. But again, higher ed is a little bit slower than K-12, changing their programs, because they have a lot of committees to go through and jump through. So again, it's just, it's going to take a little time for our ed prep programs to adjust to the new law.
Thank you. Those are my questions. Are there any more questions, board members?
Are these two interns on the same salary schedule as your first-year teachers?
Yes, sir. They're both making the fifty thousand. I would have liked that when I was student teaching.
Pretty good interns, though.
Any other questions? Any questions online? Okay, then we'll have the floor open for a motion at this point.
Move to approve the waiver request?
A motion to approve by Mr. Wood. Is there a second?
I'll second.
A second by Mr. Sutton. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Thank you all for coming in today. Next, we have the consideration of rules governing payments under the Educational Freedom Account by Andreas Rhodes.
Good morning, Chair and board, members of the board. Don't want to be too loud. I want to keep it low-tech, too. Before you, the rules governing payments under the Educational Freedom Account Program. These are basically identical to the rule, the emergency rules you approved last month. These are not the full rules. We're still considering public comment. In fact, our Office of School Choice is reading through the public comments we compiled, and they're running through any potential changes to those rules. But in the meantime, we're seeking to promulgate these rules to have a process to process payments. The only change between these permanent rules and the emergency rules you approved last month is Section one point oh-two, which requires participating schools receiving EFA funds to apply any scholarship, awards, tuition rates, and tuition discounts to an approved student's tuition costs and fees before EFA funds are used. That is to make sure that everybody's getting the benefit of any tuition discount at that school before those funds are used. I'm open for any questions that you may have.
Questions, Mr. Sutton?
This is about the program just in general, but obviously, I would, I mean, I assume that there's an annual allocation for these funds. Is that correct?
There is, yes.
And if, and if they're not all used in one year, is, does that carry over so that the fund can be larger the next year?
So there is an actual amount allotted for each school year. I'll double-check on the carryover, but I think it's just a total amount for the funds.
Okay.
Mr. Henderson, questions?
No.
Mr. Bragg? Ms. Rollins? Mr. Wood?
I do have one question. Is there, how can we ensure that schools are accountable to this particular rule? Is there, do we look at their average number of scholarships given before EFA or after? What's the accountability here to ensure that they're following this rule?
So, that's probably a question for Daryl, since he's monitoring the program. I know that this question has come up in a, in a real sense, and that's why we're addressing it in this rule. We have communicated that this change would be made, so that the participating schools are aware that this language is going to be included, not only in this rule, but in the full permanent rules. As to any annual reporting, you know, I don't know if he's present today, but we can certainly get that to you.
Courtney Solis Ford for the department. Yes, there is constant monitoring, and these private schools that participate have to go through an audit. So we are constantly checking to ensure that they are following the rules and all payments are processed properly.
More questions? Ms. Woods, Ms. Rollins online?
I don't have a question, but I was going to give a comment, and I told this to the group yesterday when I had a call. Of the people I've talked to that have participated in this account, all of their communications, it was unanimous, I talked to three people, said that their communication from the department has been top-notch, and they couldn't say the same necessarily of the school that they're enrolled in, but they're like, anytime we email the department, they get back to us immediately. The most it's ever been is three days. Everything is explained really, really well, and so I just wanted to pass that along to the powers that be and make it known to everybody that y'all are doing a great job. And up here northwest Arkansas, people recognize it, so I wanted to pass that along.
Thank you. Ms. Rollins?
I do have a question. So when we're looking at this right now, currently, the program just pertains to students enrolling in a private school. Down the road, it'll pertain to students that are homeschooled. Do these rules, does this, I mean, it sounds like it already encompasses that.
So, again, that, this only speaks to the process of payment for people that have been approved into the program. So for this school year, this would apply for the populations that were in year one. This rule, this language will also be in the permanent rule, so I mean, it, as, as we grow the program, it will apply to those subsequent populations as well.
Okay, and so it'll be sort of the same third-party processing system?
Correct.
And there, the, writing the, the current or the, the permanent rules, that, that process is happening right now with input to address some of those other things such as homeschool or other factors in the future. So these rules were about payments right now for the, the group that qualified for this year.
Right, and the permanent rules do have an audit section, so.
Okay, more questions? So the floor will be open for a motion, and this is to approve these rules for public comment. Is that correct?
Correct.
I'll move to approve.
Yeah, a motion by Ms. Woods to approve the rules for public comment. Is there a second?
A second.
A second by Mr. Bragg? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you, members.
Next, we have a consideration of an appeal for legal transfer. Mr. Rhodes, are you speaking?
I'm back. So this is a bit of a novel process for you. So Arkansas Code Annotated six eighteen three sixteen now provides parents an opportunity to appeal a denial of their transfer request from one school district to another. This appeal would be the first appeal that's, that's come before you, and it's the first of its type, and that is a denial from the Shirley School District. So the department is working on rules for this process. However, the current school choice rules are consistent with hearing practice generally before you on appeals such as this. So the chair will place all individuals seeking to testify under oath. The denying district will have twenty minutes to present their decision that is now being reviewed. The appellant, i.e. the parent, will have twenty minutes to rebut the denial of the school transfer. The receiving district will have up to five minutes to speak as needed. The board may ask questions of speakers at any time during their presentations. The board may then receive testimony at its discretion if additional individuals in the public want to speak on the petition. The vote would then vote to affirm or reverse the decision then of the denying school district based on the totality of the evidence presented. And then the board may issue its decision today or take the matter under advisement. Once a final decision has been made in an open meeting such as this, the department will prepare an order consistent with the board's findings, conclusions, and its final decision to be signed by the chair of the board. School districts may deny a school transfer for any reason, but the superintendent of the denied school district must provide his or her reasoning in writing prior to the school board's denial of the petition. That explanation was included in your packet for today. School districts are prohibited from granting legal transfers when they're under a desegregation agreement or when the transfer is void at court order. School transfers differ from school choice and, that, school choice appeals in three ways, but are otherwise generally very similar processes. First, petitions for transfer can be filed at any time during the school choice year. They're not limited to a particular window. That is one of the main differences. Either district can deny the transfer, and then the transfer can be denied for any, for any reason whatsoever. School choice generally limits denial to capacity reasons. If there are no questions on procedure, all pres, all presenters need to take their oath, and then the Shirley School District would speak first.
Thank you. Any questions on procedure, board members? Okay, so any parties that says resident, non-resident, school district, and family, anyone who wishes to speak, please stand and raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes ma'am.
Thank you. So first, we start with the non-resident school district. Is that correct, Mr. Rhodes? Sorry.
In this case, it's the resident school district.
The resident school district.
Correct. They're the denied school district.
Thank you. Is it Mr. Wiggins from Shirley?
Good morning. First of all, my name is Aaron Wiggins, Superintendent at Shirley Schools. Thank you all for allowing me to be here this morning. I will not take up twenty minutes of your time. My, I don't think my letter was about five minutes in length. There was really two reasons why, when, when I spoke with the parent on the reason for the transfer, the first reason that was given. This school year was safety concern between his student and another student. When I look back at that situation, started investigating that situation, it wasn't as quiet as what it was, seemed to be. Even after the parent came before me and talked about the safety between these two students, it was seen in our cafeteria and other areas that his student and this other student was actually sitting next to each other, across the table from each other, in a spot that they didn't have to ever be within twenty-five to thirty feet of each other, but still yet was choosing to sit by each other. The reason why I said that was the first reason this school year was simply because last school year, there was an incident between these two individuals, these two students. It was handled at the time. No further incidences. But shortly thereafter, the parent started having a conversation with myself, board members, other people in the community about going to another neighboring school district because his son played baseball on a, on a team with kids from that school and wanted to be in the same school as that, as his friends. Now, this is around the March-April time period, so it was still well within the school choice period, which ends on May the first. And so, the parent had every opportunity to fill out the school choice and go that route, which at this point now, we cannot deny. And so, that was the route that, that if he wanted the, the student to go to that school, should have been taken. It was not. Now, it was the safety issue, but also, mentioned again, was the baseball issue. Those really were the two bases, especially after looking at the safety, safety of students and staff is always our number-one concern. That's why I want to look into that. But it's hard to, it's, it's hard to say that, that a student is scared of another student when they're sitting next to them, when they're not forced to be next to each other. I really do think, in my opinion, that the main chance or the main choice about the parent wanting his son to attend another school is simply because of friends, of baseball. This is not something that, that we allow a board-to-board transfer for. You know, the student is not in high school, so there's no AAA rules that's against transferring for athletic purposes. But at the same time, myself, I did not consider this a valid reason- But at the same time, myself, I did not consider this a valid reason to request a board-to-board transfer. And that's, that's pretty much my, my reason for recommending the denial of the, of the transfer to our school board, which they upheld.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Board members, do you have questions at this point for the, for Shirley School District? Mr. Henderson?
Reading through the notes on the document, it doesn't specifically say anything about for athletic reasons. Is there any reason why it's not listed in there?
On the document that you guys have? Honestly, I don't know what documents you guys have. I know the, the one that I typed up to the parents, to, to Mr. Hensley, as well as to our school board, it does, and let me, if I'm, if I'm, if you don't mind, I do have it saved on my phone, if that's okay for me to review.
Let the record show that I do see it now?
Yes.
Yeah, it's on, it's on the bottom, so.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Mr. Bragg?
So, if a student were to make the request during that timeframe before the May cutoff, there wouldn't have to be no reason stated, is that correct?
With the new rules, that's absolutely correct. We can deny school to school, or school choice request any longer.
Okay, thank you.
Questions?
Has the district, has the district incurred any specific financial obligation to any specialized teachers or service providers to only address the needs of this student?
No.
Okay.
Questions, Ms. Keener?
You mentioned the valid reasons, and I was curious if those are written. Do you have a district policy on those reasons? Or are they just sort of judgment call each, each time it comes up?
Well, typically, honestly, in our, historian, this is all in my second year there at Shirley. But one thing that, that we're trying to turn things around at Shirley, we're trying to save our school, we're trying to do a lot of things. And one of the things is we, we can't keep allowing everybody to go here and there the other if it's not required of us to let them go. And so, when I came on board, one of the big things that the board talked about was unless there was an educational type of reason. For instance, there was a situation last year to where there was a civic program that we did not offer, which would have benefited the student in question and the neighboring district, which is also the same district in this case, did offer. And it was my recommendation to allow that student to go because it was in that student's best interest educationally. So, there's nothing that's written, written specifically, but it's just simply unless it's an actual education necessity, we don't offer certain things, and they do to better that student, then we don't allow them to, to leave after the school choice.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
What is your current ADM?
We're sitting at about three fifteen.
How many students did you lose this year from last year?
About twenty, off and on.
Yeah, you're at a critical point.
Yes, sir.
Board members online, any questions?
No. Steve, could you repeat what your question was? Just, I didn't hear it.
I'm sorry?
Repeat this question, he asked how many students in the district? And your answer was?
Three fifteen.
Three fifteen.
And then, there was a twenty response.
That's how many transferred out?
Have transferred out. So, twenty transferred out during the school choice period, is that correct?
Yes, around about eighteen to twenty.
Ms. Rollins, any questions? Thank you. So, we will now move to the non-resident school district, Westside.
The parent goes next for another twenty minutes, and then the non-resident school district.
I'm sorry, well, thank you for coming up here already.
Hi, how are y'all?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Very important information has been left out. I've tried to get it, incident reports, come to find out, you can't get anything when it comes to incidents that have happened at schools due to the Family Protection Act, I believe. But the student in question, I'm obviously not going to mention any names, has a history of clearing classrooms weekly, assaulting teachers, permanently broke my son's front tooth last year. Yeah, he sat with him at lunch, and I asked my son, I said, "Well, what planet are you sitting with him?" He goes, "Well, Dad, maybe if I make him my friend, he won't. I won't have to look over his shoulder as much." Look, I, I'm an alumni of Shirley, I love it, grew up there. Here's the deal, it's not about me. When my kid has come home crying, I'm not happy, I don't want to be here. And yes, my son's playing baseball with some boys at Gears Ferry. But here's the deal, I have a daughter at Shirley, straight A's, gets a ninety-one, comes home mad. My son, polar opposite. He's got S. He's not playing sports no matter what he's, no matter where he's in school. I don't care if, we, Pee-wee starts Saturday, Pee-wee basketball, he's not playing. I've done talk, he's well aware of that. He didn't play half the fall ball at baseball season due to his grades. I want him to, if he wants to go to school and he's at Westside, and I think it can better him, and maybe his mental health is better, I think that's my choice. I don't, I'm not trying to talk down to nobody, I don't, I want Shirley to succeed. But I've got to put my kids first. And I'm fixing to be the one that's got a kid at Shirley and a kid at Westside. Luckily, I'm employed in Westside in Gears Ferry, I work through a community water system, so, you know, the transit's not going to be that difficult. But I'm willing to take it on that responsibility. But I just come to y'all and please let my kid get, go where he can be made be happy. That's all I got.
Thank you, thank you for coming in today. Board members, do you have questions at this point? Questions, Ms. Hunter?
Yeah, so.
If you don't mind coming back up to the mic, thank you, thank you again for coming in.
So, the incident last year with the tooth, is there a reason that you didn't pursue school choice transfer?
I'll be dead honest, I did drag my feet during the spring. And, you know, we played baseball summer, my son, at the end of summer, right before school, said, "Hey, could I go to Westside?" I said, "Well, not a good time to think about this." We talked about it off and on through the summer, but through the minds of a ten-year-old, I'm not just going to jump at the first time, he says, "Hey, let's do something." No, we're gonna, let's take time to think about it. Well, I took too much time. It got past the deadline and now here we are.
Questions online, Ms. Rollins, Ms. Woods? Westside School District, thank you.
I'm Brandy Wallace, I'm the superintendent at Westside School District. We don't have any reason why we wouldn't accept the student.
Okay, thank you. Board members, any questions? Any questions?
Not, can we ask other, like, the agency something?
Yes. Let's, let's make sure, Ms. Rollins or Ms. Woods, do y'all have any questions for the Westside School District? Okay, thank you. Mr. Rhodes?
Okay, so, I'll, from the chair, as she says, I'm not a lawyer, just playing one right now. So, I wanted to see if you could explain, when looking at the law, I noticed it was kind of short. There's not much guidance in there. So, can you tell me a little bit more about the plain meaning rule and understanding that, you know, the ambiguity and kind of if, how that leads us to look at other information? Can you just tell us a little bit more on how that would play into this decision?
Say it again, the what rule?
The plain meaning rule, so it's, what I understand is that if the law is not clear, if it's ambiguous, then you are to consider pertinent information from the other sources, correct?
So, there are opportunities for you to look at parole evidence, which is other sources, that is the legal use term for that. But yeah, generally, you're looking at the, sorry, I'm trying not to project too much. You look at the plain meaning of the words written in a document. Based on your reading of those plain, you know, meanings, you then take an action, right? If, for whatever reason, the law is too unclear, you do look at places like legislative intent as to what did the General Assembly intend to do when this came up? And again, generally, when you have something this brief or short, it's giving you a lot of discretion to take action, right? So, in, in this particular case, and part of the reason why I mentioned the school choice rules is because it does have language as to making a decision based on the totality of evidence present, presented before you. That way, you are taking in all the testimony that was presented to you just now and making a decision based on the testimony presented to you. So, that, again, if you want to look at other sources, you certainly can. But generally, whenever judges are hearing a matter before them, they're taking whatever is presented before them into what decision they're making. And they're generally limited to that, but anyway.
Thank you.
Sure. Any other questions?
Other questions, board members? Mr. Bragg?
Just a clarification on, on the motion, this, it would be to uphold the appeal of the parent? I mean, you see intent here to uphold what we're being presented with?
So, the, the motion would be to either affirm the decision of this, of the school district, which would be effectively to deny the petition on appeal, or to grant the, the petition on appeal and reject the decision made by the school district? Yes, sir.
I have a question.
Yes.
Sorry, somebody else was talking, I couldn't hear.
Your turn.
Just for the department, if we rule on this today, does his transfer become effective today? Or can we put like a date, and I'm just throwing this out there, like after Thanksgiving?
So, there is a step that occurs after you would take a decision, which is both school districts would have to file the actual paperwork that they received on the school transfer with the county clerk, with their respective offices, and with the department. That's what would make the school choice transfer final. But this would effectively either affirm the decision of the school district below or nullify that decision and effectively grant the petition. So that, at that point, the receiving school district would take action. Because that, that step hasn't occurred yet.
Got it. I'm just trying to make sure that we're not, tomorrow, he doesn't show up at Westside if that, if we were to dismiss it and they're not prepared to take him on. I know that Westside said they were, I'm just logistically thinking through that.
To speak on legal use terms, we're basically, think of this as an interlocutory appeal. So, there's a single issue that was decided, went up, and it's going to go back down for the receiving school district.
Okay.
Ms. Hunter, yes?
So, you, I'm just confirming, this is the first time this board has, has had to make a decision like this. So, we are kind of creating some precedent in what we put forward.
That's correct, yeah. This was a change made in the twenty-third session.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion if the floor is ready for it.
Is there any other questions or discussion by board members?
Yeah, I do, I have a comment, and it's just that I appreciate both sides very much. I can understand the position that Shirley is in, and certainly as a parent, I understand the position that you're in. And this is, I want to ensure you that every board member here is taking this very seriously and consider it all aspects.
More questions or comments?
Ms. Moore, I, I would like to ask Westside a question, if I may.
Yes.
This child will definitely need attention coming into your district. What is your process to bring a child that really needs a little more attention into your district at this point in the school year?
Well, one thing, unfortunately, we do not have any counselors. We have our school counselors, but we do not have any mental health counselors. We have tried our best to get, get help, and we're just far, far enough away from a larger town to be able to get people to come in. Our coun, our elementary counselor at the moment is out with her husband who has terminal cancer. And so, we could have some support from our high school counselor if needed. That's what we've been doing with any student that's needed any, any extra support in elementary right now.
Would you be able to call on the co-op for their services?
Yes, if needed.
And how about the classroom teacher, the placement in the classroom?
We have our fifth and sixth grade, there's four teachers. One teaches literacy, one science, one math, and one social studies. And so, he would be in a homeroom and then would move around during the day to all the other classes.
Are you using the PLC process at your school district?
Yes.
And how is that working in your district?
It's going wonderful. We've made a lot of progress. We, actually, our high school was, received some reward money for seven to ten percent, or six to ten percent growth.
Okay, good. Thank you for that information.
Yes.
It's very helpful.
Thank you, yes, Ms. Hunter. I'm sorry, so, this question's for, no, for Mr. Wiggins. So, could you expand a li, I'm, I'm just trying to make sure I'm understanding both sides of the, or, I guess it's three sides. Could you talk a little bit about discipline, this other student? You know, there were some accusations made, I think, relative to behavior. Could you talk a little bit about that?
I don't know how much I can go into about discipline of another student for this one.
Right, no, 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 but, I mean, was, was anything mischaracterized?
The, the incident last year about the broken tooth, serious, serious situation, actually. We, our dean of students, who is not there this year, actually was the one that handled that. And when asked last year about this situation, because Mr. Hensley actually contacted me about this, so I looked into this as well, and it was not exactly like a targeted incident. It was in the hallway, there was a water bottle to the mouth, and the water bottle was hit, causing the, the incident.
More questions, comments, board members?
Well, I have, I have a comment I'd like to make, given the precedent that we're setting with what we're doing. I, I, I think that, you know, we are in a, a fresh era of expanded choices for students and families in Arkansas. And I think in this particular context with what we're considering, I think the legislature has removed a local district's final authority over whether a student can go from one district to another. My personal philosophy, as I've thought about this, this being the first time we've considered this, is I think that the government in this situation, which is the school district, I think that the government should bear a heavy burden to justify a denial of a student's or a parent's choice. What that could be, I don't exactly know, but some examples I've thought of is maybe where a local district has invested significant funds to meet specific needs of an individual child that they may be contractually obligated to fulfill for a certain period of time. That might be unfair to the, to the residential school district. Or, or maybe if they believe that the receiving district has engaged in some sort of unfair conduct, whether it be recruitment or influence or something like that, something obvious. Maybe, maybe even a situation where a large group of parents got together and they're all taking their kids out, and it's leaving the residential district with an empty classroom and an unnecessary salary, something like that, I don't know. But I hope that as districts consider requests like these from families, that they will approve the, that they will err on the side of approving these rather than spending the time opposing them. Today, I don't believe that the residential school district has met the burden that I would hope they would live up to, to deny a student's ability to go to a different school. So, that's why I will make a motion in a minute to approve the student's appeal. And I hope that that'll be the direction our board goes.
I'd also like to comment, you know, like I said, I can understand where, where the Shirley district is coming from, but also understanding particularly at this developmental phase of life. of life at a ten-year-old, how important the social aspect is, especially on every other aspect of that child's life. And so, understanding that when in a situation where, you know, things aren't going well, the letter grades can follow. So, you know, my hope is that, can we remedy one thing in order to support the needs of the others? So, anyway, that's all.
Board members, any other comments, questions? Mr. Bragg?
I understand, you know, from school situation where you hate to lose students, but also the, the passion of the parent to do what's best for their, their child is, is also critically important, so.
The floor is open for a motion, then?
I'll make a motion to approve the appeal. I'll second.
Can we hear Steve's motion again? I didn't hear it.
Yes, so Mr. Wood makes a motion to approve the appeal, which would allow the student to transfer. There's been a second by Mr. Bragg.
Thank you.
Any questions before we take a vote? All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, districts. I know y'all are very busy, so thank you for taking the time to come today. You as well, we'll be in touch. With that, we will move to the consent agenda. We have a long consent agenda with a lot of PLC cases, unfortunately. Are there any questions or any items that want to be pulled from the agenda? Ms. Rollins, Ms. Woods, any questions on the consent agenda? Give everyone a second. This is the most PLC cases that we've had in a while, unfortunately, but appreciate the work of the agency to do that. Okay, then with...
You want a motion to approve?
There's a, floor is open for a motion.
I will make that motion to approve the, the consent agenda.
Okay, Mr. Sutton made a motion to approve the consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Henderson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, with that, I believe, do we, we have individuals to sign up for public comments? We'll do that, and then take a break to allow... We do have Ms. Charlene Wright for public comment. Ms. Wright, thank you for coming in today. You know the three-minute drill, and, and we appreciate it.
Yes, after three years, I know the three minutes. Good morning, Arkansas State Board members. Dr. Moore, Secretary Jacob Oliver in his absence, Dr. Ann Anderson Gray, chairperson of the Pine Bluff chapter of the NAACP Education Committee. I, Charlene Wright, a stakeholder of the Pine Bluff School District, who supported the return of the district, but disagreed with the, disagrees with the denial of the district in immediate elected board. I am a member of several stakeholder committees in the city of Pine Bluff, including a member of the Pine Bluff branch of the National Association for the Advancement of Colored People and in its education committee. However, today, I am speaking in my individual capacity as a concerned stakeholder. Some of the duties of the NAACP Education Standing Committee is that we seek to eliminate discriminatory practices in public education to keep informed of school conditions and strive to correct abuses found in teacher certification. Our education committee has concerns that the Watson Chapel School District was placed on accredited probation, and the progress that is being made towards correcting standards for accreditation violations and the other concerns noted by the Department of Education's secondary education. We are concerned if the op, if the op, observations and monitoring of the public school accountability's team gave rise to discriminatory practices that could jeopardize student achievement and stu, and staff performance. We are aware that there was a workable master schedule on August the eighth for fifty percent of the students, and the delay in consulting with the Department of Ed, Elementary and Secondary Education was an attempt to camouflage the true inaccuracies of the master schedule, lacking staff positions and electives to balance a master schedule needed on August ninth for the remaining fifty percent of the students. We are concerned that qualified staff are hired to ensure the best quality of educations for our students, and we are soliciting your support in that all observations and monitoring eliminates discriminatory practices that will affect the educations of our students in this community and throughout the state. Thank you for allowing me to have comments on this morning. And I also appreciate you, Mr. Wood, because in the three years and coming, I see a level of more student concern. Because I prayed with that guy, and I didn't do it very loud, I didn't speak in tongues and all of that. I've been where he's been. And I, and I, I really appreciate you all. Because it, it really, when my student was told, when I was told that my child was nullified and voided and did not exist anymore. I, it, I was very broken, but I appreciate you. Because you, I didn't, I told the parent, I didn't get to this point where I appealed to the state board, but I thank God for the Department of Education with student achievement, Mr. Oliver Dillingham. It's been over thirty years, and to his interest, he came to the Pine Bluff School District and advocated with me, even with the Watson Chapel School District. And my child completed his education a semester early. He went on with a career with the United States Navy, and he's a senior chief. And I thank God for the Department of Education that advocated for him. But I told that parent, I've been where you were, where you are right now. Rally with your kid, show him their love and support. I appreciate you.
Well, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Wright, for coming in today. That was all on our list for public comments. So, we will take a break, allow Ms. Sharon to, to pack up and start back here at eleven twenty? Okay, we are good to go. We will start with Sheila Whitlow, reporting on the Watson Chapel School District. Thank you for being here today.
Good morning. Sheila Whitlow, Associate Deputy Commissioner and Director of Office of Coordinated Support and Service. So, since we were last here, the Office of Coordinated Support and Service has conducted an analysis of some of the systems within... So, since we were last here, the Office of Coordinated Support and Service has conducted an analysis of some of the systems within the Watson Chapel School District, along with some coordination with other units here at DESI. And as a result of their visits and work with the district, they identified, the team has identified some immediate needs, and those were communicated to the district leadership or building leadership. So, the needs that they're going to be here, they're here today, the superintendent, Tom Wilson, and Assistant Superintendent Dee Davis, and they're going to be sharing with you the progress that's been made. The key areas that were communicated as immediate needs, those included concerns related to school safety, and there were several concerns that were communicated to the district. The senior schedules, when we were here before, we noted that there was a large number of the students that did not have, a large number of seniors that did not have full day schedules, so that has been addressed. And then additionally, we looked at transcripts for all of the students in the high school and their schedules as well. So, those will be addressed today, and they'll be sharing the progress. I am happy to share with you that during that time, we've had a lot of people onsite providing support, and the district has been very cooperative as we provided that support to them, and we have seen progress. There's more progress that needs to be made, but we are seeing the work being done and those concerns being addressed. So, the superintendent is going to be here, and Ms. Davis to share with you right now, if you don't have any more questions for me.
I believe y'all did receive a report from us that outlines a lot of these significant findings we had. I do want to thank Ms. Whitlow and her team for everything they've done in helping us meet the needs of our kids and our district. You know, above all, we want our district to be safe, and we want to make sure our security is in place. We don't want any more problems that's happened in the past at Watson Chapel. So, security and safety were the main two issues that I took on first. You know, in looking at the findings here, you can see there was a problem with the parking area, there was a problem dropping off kids with the buses. So, we went back and did a different route for the buses, a one-way-in route that made it safe, and they dropped off next to the building on the door side, where they won't be walking around any buses or anything, and no buses will be passing each other there. We wanted to make sure the drop-off areas were safe, and they're away from the buses. One's on the south end of the gym area, and the other one's by the pavilion. We do have a security guard that does drive around basically all day. He checks students, sees students in cars or anything like that, and with duty people, they do make sure they go straight to the building. They're not staying in cars at all. And any car that comes on campus, the security officer that's in a vehicle, he does ask them what their business is and directs them where they need to go. So, we've taken care of that. As far as, I didn't know how far y'all wanted me to go into everything. I can go over everything. I did want to make sure that you know that we are working on the safety features. There's a lot that we've discovered over the past four weeks too that we've got to work on. But my goal is this, this will be my last job, and I want to make sure Watson Chapel has everything they need to give those kids in the community, and I'm telling you, we've got to do something. We just started demolition of the old school. We're going to start new construction on the new high school, forty million dollar high school in January. We've got to change the culture and make sure we got grades that are improving. We have two Ds and two Fs schools. We've got to improve that. We know that. We're in Level Four. We've got to improve that. And we have some great teachers at Watson Chapel. We have teachers also that we need to help. We want to help train those teachers to meet the needs of the kids. There's no doubt about that. There's a lot of other things in here we did as far as having duty schedules made and duty people where they should be. We make sure they're in that location, so we want to make sure that was safe too. At this time, well, one other thing I did do, every student has to enter the building through a metal detector. In front of the building, for some reason, when they come in, visitors come into the principal's office, which is located right in the front, it's in a half circle where they pull off the highway. But they come in there, and there wasn't a metal detector there. And so, I went ahead and arranged for one to be put there. Right now, we're wanting people when they come in as visitors. But that was one thing that I noticed and I hadn't really noticed before, but I noticed it after this all came about. So, we're all thinking, safety conscious, we want to make sure our schools are secure. At this time, Ms. Davis, would you like to talk a little bit about scheduling? All the seniors, whatever they want.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Dee Davis, Watson Chapel School District. Lord have mercy, I don't know where to start. There's been so much done. Current schedules are all correct, and any corrections that need to be made will be made in second semester. I don't know if you have specific questions related to any updates that I might, instead of me just going through these seventeen pages of stuff we've done, would there be specific things that you all would like for me to talk about?
Can I make a comment real quick?
Yes.
So, the document you have is a document the district made based on specific things that the OCSS team noted that needed to be fixed or corrected. My understanding, this document, when they brought it this morning, the purple are things they have completed. Okay, so the items were noted by a systems analysis by the department. There are very specific things on here about students and very specific things about student safety that we did not put out everywhere because we wanted to ensure the safety of students at the school. You know, we didn't want to say, "These doors unlocked," or this, you know. So, but you can see that that's what that is, where they're going through now and saying, "This has been completed."
Board members' questions at this point?
Yeah, can I ask a question about your proposed new forty million dollar high school? Did y'all have to pass a millage for that?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, we did. We passed eight mills for that, eight point two mills, I believe. For that, and facilities put in an extra fifteen million, but you know what happened was prices and everything, they shot up so bad, the facilities came back and gave us twenty-one point three million, I believe, and we still had our eight million local, but then we fell about ten million short. So, the district had to come up with the rest of that money to finance our new school. And that's how dedicated the community is, and my board is, one hundred percent behind this new school for the kids. Those buildings were, the old school that's being demolished right now was built in nineteen forty-five. So, we're happy about that. And while, I know this might be not what you're talking about now, but we also looked at all our doors in the high school and all our schools, and we had problems with some doors not closing all the way, or some of the locks we need to replace. So, we are going through that right now, where every door, it will be locked, every door will be locked. There'll be no props or anything like that because we want to make it all secure for our kids, and that's another thing we did.
Thank you.
I will go back and talk just a little bit about the previous twenty-seven students that we had that were not qualified to graduate. We have gone through every single student's story, I guess you could say, during their high school years to see what exactly happened. Many of those students were students who were in special education. We have put our hands on those IEPs from those students. There were five students that we found to not actually have received the credits that they were supposed to have received, and I'm going to, I don't want to miss quote anything, but of those five students, one of those students was an AP or an honor student and was only missing a half of a credit of tenth grade English. So, we are currently in the process with OCS looking for that student to see, we feel like he's in college somewhere, and what options do we have? What can we do to go back and see, was something just not recorded correctly? Because to miss a half, just that you were in the first semester of tenth grade English, but what happened during that second semester, so we have that one student. One student dropped out prior to, he dropped out at the beginning of this school year. So, we're hoping that we can locate that student and maybe place him in a five-year cohort graduation for this year. One student was simply missing a fine arts and an oral communication, a half a credit of that. So, everybody else has qualified to graduate through special education, and we've actually put our hands, we didn't just make sure the coding was right, we actually went back, dug through old files and things to put our hands and our eyes on those IEPs. So, all of those, with the exception of just a couple, Sheila, I think it was four, is that right? There was four of those twenty-seven have now been rectified. The same way we did those twenty-two, twenty-three seniors we have taken, and my small little team that I'm so appreciative of has taken and put their hands and their eyes on every single student's, not only their transcript, but their schedule, and we have calculated by hand. It takes a lot of time and a lot of just hours, but we have actually been through every single student at the high school, six hundred and fifty of them. Taking them home on the weekends and watching TV. While the husband's watching TV, we're on the phone calculating GPAs and everything else, so we've done that. We have also started the junior high, the same process, and have some cleanup to do, not a whole lot, but we do have some cleanup to have to do, and some of that cleanup entails having to actually call kids in and meet with individual students to say, "Okay, we've got to get some processes in order. What are you wanting to take?" Things like that. "What do you need to take?" So, getting them on a trajectory to be prepared for high school when they get there. And have talked about, even looking back, just, I know it's a little different with elementary because they're in blocks, but just saying, "Hey, we want to, now we need to, let's just look at K-5 and make sure we're putting our eyes and our hands on it," and not just assuming that because someone says, because you know, just because someone says, it doesn't make it so always. So, just, I've been putting my eyes and my hands on them. So, those things we feel comfortable with. It is still a process, and it's still going to be a long process. But I think we're on a path, and we just keep swimming.
Board members' questions? Mr. Bray?
Comment here about student success plan.
Yes.
What's involved in that?
So, we are currently in the process of trying to find out that selection. The district has to make a selection for those tools. Apparently, there was nothing, I think there's some components that have been done, but I think that people are unaware that they are doing some things, so there was nothing put together in an organized, coherent fashion, working with students, with families, that sort of thing. So, that selection for tools to help with that process has to be made in May. That was before I got there, so I'm in the process of trying to find out through, called a couple people have some messages and waiting on some phone calls to see, did the district make a selection? If they did not, I've already been in conversation with a company, and I'm just waiting on whether, because that's whether I'm going to do it through the department or whether I'm going to do that on my own, out of our, out of district funding, so.
As far as the components of the plan?
Yes.
Just academic courses and things like that?
Well, there's career pathway planning and things like that.
Thank you.
Questions, board members? Ms. Hunter?
So, you know, whenever you were here last time, there was concern, when you were here last time, there was concern about how much time had passed and the students had missed out on their education for about a month.
Yeah.
So, can you talk a little bit about what's been done to catch them up for the time that was lost?
Basically, what we've done, the teachers have tried to catch them up in the class. When they got new kids in the class, they would try to catch them up and give them additional materials to do to catch up. I know that was a problem. You know, in about four weeks, we kept thinking we could fix these things, and it kept getting deeper and deeper when we got into it. But as of right now, I would say, when you, as far as the kids catching up, I think the teacher's been giving them supplemental material and stuff to do that with, don't you?
So, my answer to that is that when you've lost four weeks, you've lost four weeks, that you can't get back. So, you've got to think about what you can do to what's critical. And I always, I know this is probably going to sound strange, but I always, when you're teaching teachers how to select what's essential standards and things like that, I talk to them about how you have to have water, because if you don't have water, you will die. And it'd probably be nice that you had some milk every now and again, but you won't die if you don't have milk. And I'd like to have Coke every now and again, because when I come in here, I can't have my Coke, and I always got Coke in my hand. But I won't die if I don't have it. But I will die if I don't have water. So, what's the water? What do these kids have to have? Let's focus there and then do what we can to get all those nice-to-haves. We are ensuring intervention time every single day, and that that is looking at student by student, standard by standard, skill by skill. And wherever kids do, we do a walkthrough, all hands-on-deck approach, so that kids are going and getting those deficit skills or enrichment skills that they need. Because every kid's not in the same place. And so, whatever it is they need, we are ensuring that every single day that that happens, that that's monitored, that it's progress monitored, and that we readjust every three weeks because some kids catch up faster than others. And so, wherever it is, are there deficits or there are enrichments that they need, we are working to make sure that they have that every single day for K-12. That's K-12.
Of course, on students that miss credits or anything like that, we have credit recovery, and also we'll have summer school where they can make up some of these courses they need.
Questions, Ms. Skinner?
Yeah, I had a quick question. So, you mentioned that the students that were not enrolled were added to already existing classes. Were there so many students that were, I'm worried that that put the ratios out of order. Did you have to add?
So, when does students not enroll, what do you mean?
So, the students that missed those four weeks, those first initial weeks.
Uh-huh, uh-huh.
Were they able to jump into existing classes? Or were you able to group them and maybe start, you know, assign an additional teacher to teach one of the courses? Because I'm assuming that if that many students were not enrolled, there were teachers that also needed to teach additional courses.
There really weren't just a whole lot, surprisingly, there really weren't just a whole lot of kids who were coming fresh into a class they had never been in before. Some of it, what we gave them was, we gave them four days to kind of go back, have, and solidify what those kids had been in those classes, to solidify their learning, but to also plan some activities and some things where they could catch up so that on the, I believe it was the eighteenth, if I'm not mistaken, on that following Monday, everybody was prepared to participate in new learning. And by the grace of the good Lord, it worked out that like, in things like social studies or science, it just so happened that the next concept that was going to be covered was going to be a new skill for anybody that was in there. That was just a miracle that it happened that way, but for the most part, that is what happened. And those four days, we gave them, the teachers, one day to plan. We worked with them. Went, OCSF was there. We went from class to class. We talked to groups of teachers. They planned together. And they planned for those four days to say, "Okay, what is the critical that we've got to have to be able to participate in the new learning on Monday?" So, they worked together and created four days of instruction to work towards that. I don't know if that answered your question.
Yeah, thank you, yeah.
And one other thing is, the seniors or the high school will be making up a day. And one other thing is the seniors or the high school will be making up a day during one of the fall or one of the spring Fridays, we're out. The other schools, all the other schools were in session that one, you know, that day. We had to go ahead and dismiss the high school so the teachers, we could all get together and make plans out. So they will be making up that day in the spring.
Questions?
Not a question, just a comment. I, I think it's obvious that you're making some progress. And I would congratulate you on the job done so far. I know you've still got a ways to go, but it, it don't be easy. It took longer than just a year to get this far behind. So I, I think the community and your staff, I would be very pleased with what's been done.
I really believe everybody's committed right now. This was a eyes wide open experience and everybody knows how serious it is now. And we, we got help, you know, everybody's helping each other. And that's, I tried to bring in a team concept, together everyone achieves more, you know? And that's what it's all about. And, and now we realize that more than ever. We got to help each other out. We got to get our grades up, our scores up, we got to make up for lost time. And we got to make sure every student earns that diploma when they graduate from Watson Chapel High School.
Any more questions?
Yes.
And just, so I will say, when, when I visited the school and Sheila's been in the school with the OCSF team frequently, for the most part, it was orderly, teachers were teaching, kids were in classrooms. You have some teachers that are in that district that have been in that district for a very long time, that are really dedicated to the Watson Chapel School District. The systems, structural piece, data and scheduling and just ensuring like, you know, all the safety boxes are checked, that's where we have breakdowns. So putting those structures and those systems in place and making sure that that's done is where they're making the most progress right now. I think your question on, you know, making up the time, I think is valid. I also think it's just about making up any kind of gaps of, of just for students being successful. I think there's opportunities, especially in the second semester, working with the department. We can look at some of the possible grants around tutoring. We could look at extended day or summer opportunities. We can look at ACT preparation. We definitely need to be pushing into the classrooms and making sure that we're doing inventory to make sure that teachers in the classrooms have all the necessary materials and resources needed to teach. The students have access to quality books. I mean, I think there's lots of opportunities there to make sure that we're doing everything we can to make sure that students are getting a quality education. This last month, a lot of it has been systems checks. Everybody's got a complete schedule, everybody's got a correct schedule. Everybody is in the right courses to graduate, getting the data correct in the systems. Like that's where a lot of the time and energy has been, has been spent. And I do want to commend Sheila and OCSF team for the work that they've done. Want to recognize that you guys have been on board and working with them and, and listening to directions on things that have got to be addressed. So I think that's important. So thank you.
Ms. Woods and Ms. Rollins, I wanted to give you all the opportunity to ask questions. I, I do have a question, if you don't mind. Can you share with me, what is your, how many credits do you require high school students to graduate?
I meant what?
How many credits are required to graduate?
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two, so that's the minimum in the state. You don't require anything above what the state requires?
Twenty-two.
Okay, so is that why you have so many seniors not taking a full load?
I think it had to do with scheduling errors.
If you have seniors who are in two study halls, it's because you have lower expectations for them.
Yes, I think it was scheduling errors done, really with counselors. You know, we've had several counselors change, changes in the past two or three years, well, already more than. But we have quite a bit of turnovers too. But I'm not trying to make excuses for it, we're still responsible for that. And I think it had to do with counseling errors, reading why they didn't get their credits the way they should.
I understand that, but I would be, I would be wanting you all to have the conversation with OCSF about having your students take a full course load.
Okay.
Even if it's, you know, even if you're just requiring the bare minimum of twenty-two credits.
Yes.
There are opportunities that students aren't getting.
Yes.
Because you are allowing them to sit in study hall. Unless that study hall is guided where they're receiving tutors, that probably isn't the best use of their time.
I agree a hundred percent.
Dr. Moore, those are scheduling errors. Those have been corrected. They will be, there will be new schedules issued for second semester, there will, there's no study hall. There is a work internship program, which is a class, it is a class for credit. Those are the only students that will be, have, they, for part of that time, they meet with the teacher and for part of that time, they go to a job. And then that teacher goes out to the job. So that's a, that's a program that we, and we part, we partner with the co-op there for, for that. And so that's the only.
Good, do you offer any career tech programs through that?
Yes, yes.
And I, I hear, see that you're going to have students with a full course load next semester. But I would hope that, that that would continue with your board as well, having that conversation about looking at that coursework for students and what they need to be doing to graduate.
Absolutely, and that's, that's the whole point of student success plans and those things like that, that we, some systems.
Particularly when your students are well below grade level, unfortunately, looking at the data.
Absolutely.
They need above and beyond.
That's right.
Yes, Ms. Whitlow?
I just wanted to add that, that we found during our conversations that, that had been a practice in the past for seniors. And so the understanding is that that's not going to be in the future and it's just a change in that culture and the expectation of the seniors. So I think that this development of students, student success plans will help tremendously with that because those students will then be continually meeting with someone and having plans. But I did, I did want to say that this hasn't, this wasn't just a, an isolated event. This has been something that's been, happened in the past as well.
The, oh, sorry, Dennis, I have a quick question. The students that, you mentioned the internship program. And I read in there that there were students who were not participating in the internship program, but were leaving school early to go to work. Have those particular students, has that been addressed? Are they now enrolled in classes? Or is that also going to wait until next semester?
Now, that has already been addressed. Yes, that has already been addressed. Again, that was a misunderstanding from many previous years. And just had to get that, in fact, that particular was like, ah!
Yeah, great, okay.
No, can't do that, so, yeah.
Yes, so we, we had hoped that we would be able to have everyone have full schedules and no study halls and, and take care of all of that. But as you can imagine, this, you know, this far into this semester, it was just going to create too much confusion. But that is going to be addressed second semester.
Could I ask a follow-up to your question, Dr. Moore? Maybe at the next report, could, could we see a, a list of all the course offerings for the students at, at your high school? Just because I'd love to know, you know, what, what's available to them to, to participate in, especially in the elective situations, to keep them engaged in things that they're interested in.
I'll, I'll follow up with that. What interim assessment do you all give? Do you give one for reading and math at the high school?
Yes, we do Renaissance, Star, Reading and Star Math.
Okay, and would, by, when would we be able to see student growth with that?
We use the state's window and I believe that opens in January. For you, I mean, I could, I may have some growth, I may have some growth reports that I can pull between that because we progress monitor every three weeks. So I may could have you something, but that formal, we use the formal interims through the, with, with the state.
Okay, I think maybe after the new year, at what, what point?
Yes, I think.
Information for us to see.
I don't know when the board meeting date is in January, but that's possible if we have that data back, yes.
Thank you. More questions, comments, board members? Ms. Woods, Ms. Rollins? Okay, thank you all. So at this point, we asked for a monthly report from you all. So we will be conversing about what that looks like for next month, is that correct? Okay, thank you. And we will move on to board liaison reports. Again, at a time, even if you're not an official liaison at this point in time, if there's anything you'd like to share about work that's being done or anything you've seen this month, feel free to do so.
Well, I'll share briefly about what I was hoping to be able to report on with regard to a subcommittee that would look at, you know, some level of digging into the districts that seem to have a high number of lower performing schools. I had hoped to, to propose a subcommittee at, at this meeting. I'm not prepared to do that today. I had a death in the family in October that took up a, a number of days and weeks on the road and out of town. But I, I had, I did, did attend a, a working group that, that Hope Worsham was leading with regard to the accountability formula, letter grade formula for, for the schools. And I've, I've been digging into a very large number of statutes that might give various authority to this board to act in different ways. And so just digging into all of that, I hope to have meetings with the department over the next few weeks to, to talk about what a subcommittee might look and hope to have that at the December meeting.
Thank you. Any reports or things to share? Ms. Rollins?
Dr. Moore?
Yes. Ms. Rollins, you can go.
Yes, I had met briefly with the Child Health Advisory Committee, three members from that committee this week. And they have their 2023 health recommendations for us to, to look at. They're asking if they could be on the action agenda. I think last time they, they were placed on the other agendas, so. And they also have some data to share with us about how important health is with student learning. And I'm just wondering if we could give them more time to really come and visit with us, share their data with us, maybe over one of our training, trainings or at this report time. So just letting you know that and maybe get your thoughts on putting them on the action agenda or just giving them more time with their report.
Yeah, and that is something that Jerry Clark in our Health Services Unit, she's part of that committee. So we will get with her to determine when's the best time for that report to go on and for them to come and speak to the board.
Thank you.
That'd be great, thank you.
Any other board members? And we will move on to Office of Early Childhood.
Yeah, and while Tanya's getting ready, I do want to just take a moment to acknowledge an employee that the department that we lost this last week, he was a current employee. It was Oliver Dillingham. He began his education career in nineteen seventy. Began his work here at the department in nineteen eighty-seven. So that means he dedicated thirty-six years to working here at the Department of Education. And so he was known by districts all across the state and known by all the people here at the Department of Education. And I didn't want this moment to pass, that we didn't just at least get to acknowledge his dedication to education in our state and the impact that he's had on schools and students across the state. So Oliver is survived by his wife and four children, a son and three daughters. So thank you for allowing me to do that.
Well, thank you, it's a real honor to be here. We are really busy in the Office of Early Childhood right now, as you can imagine. So I just wanted to provide an update and then if you all have questions, be happy to take those. And also just want you all to have a sense of what we have in early childhood in Arkansas. Because I, I think this is new to the Department of Ed as we created this transition and brought all these things over.
And I do want to say, Tanya is a legend in early childhood in our state. She was at DHS for, for many, many years. And when they rolled over ABC a couple of years ago, I kept saying, where's Tanya? Why didn't she come? And so we're glad to have her as part of the team.
Yeah, I knew, I was so nervous watching this technology play out. You were ready, okay, thank you. I see it, I see it now, thank you. I'm going to try to go slow here. This is really foundational in early childhood. And I use this slide, I've been using it probably for over a decade. And you may have seen it, you may be see, see others in the early childhood role using it. But I cannot stress enough the importance of the brain development and what's happening in these first five years of life. And if you look at that slide and see the peaks of development and look at the bottom months and years, see where five is, everything's happening before they start kindergarten. It is one of the most criti- critical times of development in child's life. So I just want to underscore that. Everything we're doing here and everything that is happening to a young child is really building on skills for the future. I also just want to make a point that in our field, people talk about play. I get a lot of calls from grownups, as I like to say, who are saying, well, it just looks like they're playing, Tanya. I don't see them learning their ABCs. Play equals learning in early childhood. That does not mean it's not facilitated by teachers. And that children aren't learning their letters and numbers and colors and shapes and doing math and science. So I just want to make sure everybody understands that. We have early learning standards that we've had in our state for many years. They were redone about ten years ago. And a group of people from across DHS at the time and the Department of Ed and from the field came together and developed, really what we did was put them together. We had zero to three and we had three to five. And we just put them together as a birth to sixty months or birth to five continuum. We have a kindergarten readiness definition that's been in place for over a decade. We are looking at that definition and have added assessment. Like we will have a state-approved assessment tool to measure kindergarten readiness on children, so. But this is so important to children's learning. Whoops, and now I'm going the wrong way. Okay, maybe I'll let you do the slides and I'll just give you the cue. Of course, all that brain development and the importance of reading is really critical during this time, as you can imagine. Their language, their literacy skills. So I like to talk about, there's a lot of research about word knowledge in young children. There's been a ton of research released over the last several decades. And studies really show that reading one book to a child every day can increase their vocabulary by three hundred thousand words. Think about that for a minute. And five books, yes, three hundred thousand words, one book, a short book, five books can increase it by one point three million every day. So over, when we were in the Division of Childcare during the pandemic, Ms. Lester, who was here earlier, is part of the team that was recognized for their service in the military, former veteran. Onika had this grand idea that we do ten minutes matter and I just really want to plug her in there. And we started this effort and just started pushing out a whole public media thing at DHS that we're bringing over to the department to really support rise and pre-K rise and literacy. And it is just everyone who's touching the life of a child, ten minutes, one book, every single day. And you can see what can happen there. Next slide. I put this one in, it's, it's several years old, it's sixteen, seventeen years old. What I really want you to see here is, as early as two thousand six and two thousand seven, we were tracking children in really three programs that we have public funding in. And it's pretty small cohorts, but we were looking at students' literacy and math and reading at the time. Different assessment tools were being used at that time. But this just shows you, and I really want you to pay attention to, the difference between children in Head Start and ABC in literacy. They were up at a fifty-two point five seven and fifty-two point two three. But the children that we served in federal childcare, what people call subsidy or vouchers, is significantly lower on both of those years. And that's why we created the Quality Rating and Improvement System called Better Beginnings that lets all the programs, we have almost two thousand programs in Arkansas that we license, but all of them have the opportunity to participate in that and be more than just a licensed early care and education facility, but to really start bringing in that quality of learning, high-quality instructional materials, meeting more than just a minimum health and safety top standard. Next slide. This one I'm real excited about and I know if Lori Bridges is in the room, congratulating her ABC team, our state-funded pre-K. That moved over here several years ago, but we have worked in partnership always. But this is really kudos to that team. This is the reading proficiency for children, starting with a cohort in third grade that had pre-K, ABC, and those children who had no pre-K. And it shows you from. And it shows you from third grade to 10th grade, the difference between those. There's a percent throughout. It's consistent. What I don't have this time, and I'll be bringing back at some point in the future if we have an opportunity to present, is the graduation rate of a cohort that started, our first graduating cohort that we've tracked all the way, and the percent of those graduating is right with all of the kids in Arkansas. It's amazing what pre-K has been able, it's a really stabilizer for children who meet the income criteria in that program. Next slide. I want to spend a few minutes here. Early childhood education is really economic development, and if we did not see that during the pandemic, I'm sure many of you have been in conversations with families, with family members, maybe a neighbor, a friend, a child, a grandchild, where a parent was having to make difficult decisions about childcare. And I think I just, this is really important for working families. We want it to be high quality. We want it to be for children in my world. We're wanting to improve the quality of that. We want good teachers. We want high-quality instructional materials, high-quality curric, all of those things happening. But for a parent who's working, myself, or anybody in this state, when you go to work and now that your child is in a high-quality environment and is being taken care of, you can do your job better. There's lots of research about that and data to support that. So we use a lot of words in our field, childcare, early childhood education, child development. I'm telling you, it is synonymous, and we really need to say early childhood education because when you have a billion, a million neurons a second developing in a child's brain, it is education, and we have to do the very best job that we can. Next slide. You know, you're getting something new over here, and I want you to know what you're getting. So again, you know, really big shout out to my state-funded pre-K colleagues. The National Institute for Early Education Research ranked states for their quality of their pre-K program and some other metrics, and Arkansas was ranked, and this is a pretty consistent ranking, eight out of 10 for the quality standards that we have. And Lori and I are going to be working on those two that we're not getting a 10 out of 10 for. We are ranked sixth in the nation for the number of three-year-olds served. A lot of states do not serve three-year-olds, so kudos to Arkansas for saying three and four. And I can tell you who somebody has been in the field with early childhood in classrooms with children. When you can serve children, especially children who are at a disadvantage for two years, you get a much bigger impact with those children. You get that continuous quality, and it's really a boost for them. We get ranked 22nd for four-year-olds and then 12th for overall spending by our state. So significant legislative input to that program historically, and so wanted you to be aware of that. I think they're working on the new report right now, and it'll come out usually in the spring. So we definitely want to make sure you're aware when that comes out. And then for the past two years, unbeknownst to any of us, we've been recognized by Wallet Hub, who's an organization that takes tons of data, and they use metrics that are not, they don't come to us and ask us about it, but Arkansas has been ranked number one two years in a row by Wallet Hub for its early childhood education system, not just pre-K. The metrics include things like our Quality Rating and Improvement System. It includes the childcare rates that Arkansas pays out of the federal subsidy program. It includes that we don't have a waiting list in Arkansas for families who meet that criteria. So it's a really big kudos to the team. This is definitely a team effort by many, many people, both across agencies but in the field of early care and education. Next slide. Want to talk just about a few things from LEARNS that you all probably have seen in that legislation. I always say it's 146 pages. We have about six pages related to early learning. We have the Office of Early Childhood, so we are under the Department of Ed and have been since August 1st. We're all real excited about that. We have not physically relocated. We have a couple of staff that are over here at the department, but we're working on space and we're going to be closer hopefully in the spring. The website and big shout out to the IT team here at ADE. They had that website ready to go. So we're under in offices. You'll find it under that section in the Office of Early Childhood with our website. And then we're currently working on rules. We have seven rules, and those will be coming here at some point. We'll be working with our legal team and bringing them to the board. Their licensing, Arkansas Better Chance, birth to pre-K credential, that's in rule, and then our Better Beginnings or Quality Rating and Improvement. So there are seven total. We have an early learning working group and acknowledge Ms. Keener, who's a part of that working group, and appreciate her expertise. We're, as I've mentioned, we've worked on that kindergarten readiness definition. We will be adding that to our minimum licensing regulations so that every provider that is licensed in Arkansas knows what kindergarten readiness is in the state. That's not been done. We had it, and maybe that's why people don't know about it, but we want to build that. We want it in Better Beginnings. We want it in our Arkansas Better Chance rules. All of that, that definition will be in all of those rules so that anybody who's touched by those programs or in early care and education will be able to see that. I'm going to talk a little bit more about local leads. That's a big part of the LEARNS Act and the Uniform Accountability System. We'll be using, we currently use a tool called the Environment Rating Scale. It's been used in the state for a long time, but class is the alternate tool that we'll be piloting starting next school year. And next slide. So the local leads, this is, I mean, I don't know that I've ever worked on something so rapidly in state government, but it's in the Act that we establish local lead organizations. And if you think about it, it's not like our local schools, but it is in some ways. It allows local communities to have input into early childhood. Really excited about this. I think it has a lot of opportunity. We have funded, you can see the kinds of things they're going to be doing, conducting a needs assessment at the local level for their community. We have a lot of data about that, but there may be things inherently that they know, business that are coming in, businesses that are closing, that may be impacting childcare much more rapidly than the state can respond. So they'll do a needs assessment. If you remember the executive order, there are concerns about the unduplicated count. Lori knows how many ABC children she has. We know how many children in Child Care Development Fund. Head Start has their list, but there are other children in our state. There are parents who pay for childcare. There are children in early intervention programs. So really getting a handle on an unduplicated count and where they are being served. And more importantly, finding out what the outcome is, and are we doing the right things? And do we need to make adjustments to what we're doing? They will establish a local collaborating structure. They'll identify shared resources that support access to quality in early care and education, and then coordinate enrollment processes at the local level. So the whole effort is to help families navigate this complicated early care and education world as well as support to providers and ultimately better outcomes for children. So next slide. A drumroll here, and I just, I want to preface this. Courtney Salsford and I talked about this. There are a lot of questions at Joint Education Monday about this. Let me just say, this is the first cohort. This is going to be required across the state. It's in the law. It's not, this is the beginning, not the end. So if there are areas that you look at and like, that's my area and it doesn't have coverage, it will have coverage. We are starting something that we've never had, and we are about quality, not quantity today. We need to really focus on that. How do we stand up entities to do something that has never been done? So I just want to make sure you all understand. That's why we selected, we wanted to make sure, and I think there is good geographic coverage. We're covering 29 counties with these first 12. That's a third of the state. That's pretty good. We will be doing a cohort in the spring, so you'll start to see that map fill in, and eventually the entire state will have someone leading, whether it's a group that you can see. For example, the OUR Co-op is doing several counties up in that part of the state. Carroll Boone, Marion Baxter, Cersei. They are doing several counties, but then you'll see Pulaski, which is a city. The other thing you'll notice is it's different kinds of organizations. There are education co-ops. There are childcare aware that we currently work with in the early childhood world that do similar work, but not this work. And then there are two school districts, and there is a couple of Excel by Eight entities, Batesville and the City of Little Rock. And so there is so much opportunity here. I just want to give you an example. Louisiana has shared some of the work that they've done for the past decade. They have money coming into some of those communities to the tunes of millions of dollars to expand access because the community or a city decided to pass, do something because it was important to that community. There are philanthropic things happening in that state. There are efforts in those communities to raise the quality of all early care and education, not just a few. You could focus on teacher workforce type issues. So there are so many opportunities with local leads that I could talk about it for a long time. I think that might be my last slide, and I'm happy, oh no, quick wins. Yeah, this is really exciting. For some of you who have worked with me, we have been running background checks on school district pre-K employees for the Department of Human Services and the Department of Ed. Starting on October 1, they only have to run one background check. That was an immediate quick win. I've talked to legislators and probably the governor's office historically about this, and how can we change this and make this better? But this saves money and time for those employees who are in a district pre-K program. We are also working on, currently, we have a rule in our licensing regs that a treatment check is every two years. The Department of Ed has five years. We're going to align that so that it's five years, so that there's consistency. So those are some really quick wins that we've done. And right now Lori and my team that does federal childcare assistance are working on a joint application for families so that they only have to do one application and we won't be doing multiple applications and trying to make that a little more seamless. So, and that is it. There is a lot of other things, but I feel like I've taken a lot of time, so.
Thank you. Board members, questions?
You know, I've got to talk during this session. Thank you so much for coming, and I am so excited to see all this. And, you know, I think we are in such a time of transition, you know, in all education, as the secretary would say, and cradle to career, where we're looking at everything again, and I'm just so excited that this has come to light and come to, you know, come to the attention of the Department of Ed because it is such an exciting thing. I certainly have spoken about the 30 million word gap for a long time, and those in early childhood understand that is research that was done years and years ago that looks at the language development of children that are, you know, in a language-rich environment versus others, and that by the time they are in kindergarten, there can be a 30 million word difference in the language heard in one child versus another. And it's something as simple as when you're changing a baby's diaper, are you looking at them in their eyes and talking to them about what you're doing? Or are you just thinking about something else and looking around the room, getting through the task? That is the difference, and that's where that 30 million word gap comes in. And, you know, as you can imagine, it is the trajectory of the rest of their lives that is, you know, comes from this. So I'm so excited to be a part of this work and kind of have a seat at the table. And let me think. Oh, there was, I did have a question about the, and this is something that we've looked at in the work group that just kind of came up, but I understand that the minimum licensing standards are under review. Talk to us a little bit more about that and that process and the timeline on that.
Yeah, no, that's a great one. That actually is in the LEARNS Act as well to review minimum licensing or licensing regulations to make sure that we don't have barriers, unintended barriers. So we have an external entity that is doing that work right now, working with our, you know, the Office of Early Childhood, but also working with providers. She was on our, we have a provider Zoom call once a month. It's on the first Tuesday at noon. We invite all, any providers. I won't even share this week. We had 300 on there, and we moved over to the Department of Ed Zoom link, and we only have space for 300, and we've never had a problem because usually it's only 150 or 200 people that get on. And all of a sudden this week, it was like we were kicking. I've got to let my staff know you won't be able to be on the provider Zoom call in the future, and maybe some contractors. But that work is happening, Leah. She is working, she's going to be doing a survey out. She was sharing that with the providers, like be ready for this survey, please fill it out. And we really urge them and just, you know, I really encourage them, like this is a place to send in your concerns so that we know. I may not know, I get lots of calls from providers about something, and I'm like, if you hadn't called me, I cannot correct or address if it's a personnel matter or just maybe miscommunication. And we've had a lot of turnover in our agency in the licensing team alone. So we have to train them, and it's a lot of training to help them understand the rules and regulations and make sure that they're not going rogue, as I like to say on us, and maybe citing people for things that we wouldn't. I think the timeline on that, Leah, she's going to have her work done by the end of the year, and so we'd be bringing something probably early in January to you all with those licensing regulations. Once legal, my colleagues back there in legal are probably having, we got to get it to them, and then we'll bring it to you all. But maybe January, early February, you know, I would expect that.
More questions? Mr. Brad?
Thank you. I've seen some of the brain development research presented through the Dolly Parton Imagination Library, and the research has proven that it's been very effective. In the last session, there was a bill passed that actually allowed the state to help fund some of that. And to me, a benefit is it reaches the home at age zero and kind of fills a gap between zero and three. Has there been any discussion, you know?
We fund Dolly Parton Imagination Library out of our Office of Early Childhood. We are statewide coverage now. There's certainly areas, you know, but we talk about it, we encourage it, we try to help programs see how they can do that, like because really it's a match at the local level, and so programs that receive public funding from us can use those resources to help offset the cost of those books. I would also plug in that it's for all children. It's not just for income-based, which is a lot of the work that Lori and my team does. All of these programs are income-targeted, but Dolly Parton Imagination Library will provide books to all children, which is incredibly beneficial. And that gets back to the word gap and the number of books in a home and how important that is to families.
Ms. Allens or Ms. Woods, any questions online? Thank you.
Well, I have a couple more, if you don't mind, before you go. Just, and you and I have spoken about this, but it is something that I just wanted to kind of throw out there. Well, actually, this was the first one that we haven't. But you mentioned the uniform use of the class system, and currently we're using the ECHERS and the PAS. Tell me about that transition. Will the same trainers, the same contractors be used and how that's going to look?
So it's a little premature to say the same contractors will be used, but certainly we'll be looking for people who have experience and who have knowledge, and I think there's a great opportunity for that. But, you know, there's a whole process. I think for the pilot, we're required to do a pilot year, and we want to get started on that probably in the spring for the school year starting in the fall to begin that process. All programs will be held harmless, so there will be no, you know, no scoring that will be used against them with that new tool. It is, I will tell you, as someone who's implemented things at the state level in a broad way, it's a big lift, and so it will take a lot of training and support to flip to, from one model to the other. I think the approach is to do the pilot, to do as many types of programs. We want Arkansas Better Chance programs. We want publicly funded, we want federally funded through us. But we also want where parents pay, and we want family childcare, and we want faith-based entities. We really need, because that's the world that we serve, and we need a really broad, you know, view of what the experience is for that tool. I think as we do that transition, it'll be really important to help educate our field and prepare the staff, but prepare even my team because there are lots of questions right now, as you can imagine, Leah, about that. I will say this, Arkansas has used a tool, and the tools are not dissimilar. But, you know, just to give you a sense of that, the Environmental Rating Scale is, I would say, pretty broad. It looks at multiple areas, and it's looking at the environment where the class tool really gets into teacher intentionality, effective use of curriculum, and what is happening in that classroom with interaction, teacher disposition. So it's really kind of, and I feel like we're really poised, I feel like we're really ready for that because of all the time that we've spent and invested. So I'm probably a little less worried than some of my colleagues, but I also know there's, you know, whenever you're doing a tool and that's what you're getting funding for, there's that worry. And I just have to keep reassuring people, like this isn't about us, it's about children, and we got to stay focused on that, that this is the right thing to do for children. But I also want to hear from our field when we do both tools because they're going to have the experience, and it's really important that we listen and that we not just say we're switching to a tool. There may be some notion that this is a better tool, but we also have to make sure we have outcomes measured with whichever tool we're going to be using.
Thank you. I appreciate that so much. And then now this last thing that is something that you and I have spoken about and a concern that I've brought up, but with the local leads and our current model with the CCRNR, the Child Care Aware Resource and Referral Agencies, you know,
the Child Care Aware Resource and Referral Agencies, you know, I have some concern of some overlapping of funds. And so in a similar way, as, you know, some duplications of intent and behind them, you know, they both are state-funded, they're both called to support us as families, support us as childcare providers. They're both called to engage the community, inform the community. They're both called to gather and maintain data, on the required data, and they are both called to be the lead for a specific region. So my concern is that there might be some duplication of funding going on. And I was, you know, the, anyway, if you could just talk a little bit more about that and how that, if those shifts will occur and I think now, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I think those contracts, will they come to us or, yeah, that was something, so if you'll just talk a little bit more about that.
Yeah. So we will be reviewing all contracts that we have in the Office of Early Childhood. So every bit of money that goes out beyond direct services to children and we pay. We're required federally through the childcare block grant. And then Lori has things in the Arkansas Better Chance law that really require her and all of us to think about, how do we make sure that happens? So training and professional development. The childcare resource and referral is a part of the childcare block grant. So we have to address that. Louisiana, I think, one of the experiences that I've picked up on there is they have local leads that are working in partnership with, it's not the same entity even. In Arkansas, we have a couple of childcare awares that were awarded, but, you know, I think that can work in partnership. But I think that what they're doing may look a little bit differently. And that's something we're going to have to look for because we don't want duplication. If you read the section of the Learns Law that we're in, there's, there's definitely language in there about assessing what you're doing and if we need to make sure that we need to tweak something, you know, and adjust contracts, for example, for professional development or anything else we're doing, we don't want to have duplication. You know, we want to have things streamlined. So I definitely think there's a place for childcare aware. It may be in partnership with a local lead or they, they may be a local lead. But we, you know, we, I've been doing this for almost 20 years. And when I first started, I think we had three or four childcare awares and it did not cover our state.
And we're at five now?
We, we actually have better coverage, but I would say we probably have areas that are not covered well. And I think this is a way to get there a lot faster. So if you have colleagues that are reaching out to you or they have concerns, I think it's just letting people know. This is really about helping children. And so, you know, there's a place for people. I, I think people will, it will sort itself out and people who are in this field will land somewhere in the work. Because as I tell people, we don't have an army. We're not, we don't have another army. The people that we have in Arkansas is who we have. So I do think people, it just may look different. It's change. And trust me, we're living it daily. It just maybe feel a little uncomfortable for them right now because they're outside of it a little bit. But we will be, we'll be working and we'll, and we will be notifying programs. We're not just going to pull funding. It doesn't work that way. We notify people if there's going to be a change and give them adequate notice. But we have to look at all that. We have to do that anyway. We do that annually. But definitely we'll be taking that into consideration and making sure that we're not duplicating as we move these local leads out. I definitely would encourage local leads to work with their childcare aware folks, you know, if there is one available. But I would equally say they need to work with Head Start because they do community assessment as a part of their federal requirements. And they need to partner. They may have information that will be helpful to that needs assessment that they might miss, so.
I just want to add this too. First, Tanya's been a Arkansas Department of Education employee now for three months. They, they started with the Early Childhood Division, actually came here August 1st, was when it became official. And so there's been a lot of transition bumps that, that are getting worked out. And I appreciate everybody in HR and finance and all those folks who are working on those pieces. And the thing that's exciting, I would say, in Learns and even what you bring to this board is there is a huge vision on what's, what's next in early childhood and how is that going to impact K-12, right? And how does that impact post-secondary and investing in that? And right now, I think the biggest opportunities we have, and then these are the questions, like, when you're asking these questions, I'm like, that makes so much sense, is really, same thing we're asking districts to do. What are your systems that you have set up to make sure that you are producing efficient, efficiency, but also outcomes, right? And so what are the systems that we have right now here at the department? What did we have previously at DHS? Where's our money going? What are the outcomes of that? Like, that's part of this first year's whole analysis of how do we get those outcomes? And with the, because Arkansas, as a state, heavily invest in state pre-K. I mean, we're, in comparison to other states, we, we, so we just got to make sure, one, that we're getting outcomes with what we're investing so that if there is more to be done and more funds to be asked for, we have, we have a clear plan and systems aligned. So I appreciate your commitment to this and wanting to be a part of this conversation. And Lori is sitting at the back, Lori's name's been mentioned several times and she's sitting in the back there. We appreciate the work that they're doing, so appreciate you.
Well, that was, the other thing I was going to say was that, sorry, I keep interrupting you, is that, you know, since my appointment, I've spent a huge amount of time just getting to know the programs that I haven't been exposed to. And it's so funny, I've had a multitude of conversations over the last three months with countless people and it's shocking how many times they go, wow, I was just talking to Tanya the other day. You are out there, you are talking to everybody you can and you give everybody your time and it's been, and keeping everyone informed and it's been so impressive. And I know you've been busy, so thank you.
May I ask a question to follow up that? The, so the work that the local leads are doing, will that be presented to us at some point? Where does that go?
There is a requirement to report to the legislature, Dr. Moore, but, but yes, if that's something, you know, I want to be respectful of your time because I know you all cover, I, I've sat here this morning and made a lot of notes about things we might need to be talking about with some of our schools and early childhood and connections. So, you know, to give you an example, like, we need to know how many pre-K children are being served in some of the, especially small districts. I'm a small-town girl from the state and, you know, certainly want to preserve schools whenever that's possible. But digging into that data and working with my K-12 colleagues to go, what do we know about the early childhood part of that world and how children are fitting into that system is really critical? But yes, we can absolutely bring reports on local leads to this group. I don't think in the law it specifically says that. I think it says legislature, but I read that law about every hour. Every time I read it, something is new. So, but, but yes, this, that would definitely be a place to report also.
I'm not a big better, but I'm pretty sure Ms. Keener's going to make sure we hear about it.
Well, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all.
And I'm sorry, Ms. Rollins, I did not mean, you were, I'm three and I slipped to four. That did not mean to minimize at all. Do you want to go now with your reports?
The reports for Level 5 are on there for just your consideration. Those are legislative reports that go to the legislature. And we don't have a presentation or anything with those, just if anybody had any specific questions.
So I guess, yeah, we'll do that. Does anyone have any questions on these reports? We have Earl, Lee County, Marvel Lane and Helena West Helena. Am I right? Any questions? Ms. Rollins or Ms. Woods, did y'all have any questions on this? Okay, I did, I did ask a lot of questions, some offline, preparing for this meeting. But I did, I, I do appreciate particularly having the Marvel report. How often are we getting these reports?
So they are submitting a quarterly report the same way that we're asking for these. So at the same time that you have the quarterly reports for District Center State Authority, that Marvel reported to come at the same time. I've been to the district at least twice this school year. Ms. Whitlow's been several times in the OCSS team. So we're, we're making frequent visits and checking in on them. I'm still working out some of the bumps, but they're, but you'll have a report every quarterly.
Okay, can I, can I ask in the next reports if we do have, you know, the interim growth reports to include that academic data in there as well?
Absolutely.
And then particular, and then maybe at some point in time, do we want to, you know, zoom in the superintendent's later in the spring to, to get an understanding?
Yeah, and we had talked about trying to bring, like, these districts one at a time forward and let them do a bigger presentation on their data and things that they were working towards. And so that's definitely something we want to still do.
Thank you. Any questions on that? Awesome. Well, we save the best for last then. Ms. Rollins?
Good afternoon. I remember it was after 12 with the time change and everything, so I'm proud of myself for that. So my November board report includes some activities and some opportunities that I have been able to perform over the past month. And the first one being elevating the professional, the profession, speaking to students about joining the greatest profession in the world. So I was invited to Coach Tennyson's Pre-Educator Pathway. The students there in her classroom at my mail and Ms. Wilson, who's also my, my daughter's Spanish teacher there at Bryant. And I got a chance to talk to their students in Educator Rising classes about joining the profession and being able to just share my, my personal background, my journey into education. I talked about the ATOY program because I believe Arkansas has one of the top programs in the United States. I get to brag about that. And then I was invited to Teachers College at Henderson State University, their College of Education, talking to their undergraduate students because it's so important to me to talk to future educators that will soon be entering the classroom and making an impact on our students. So some of them are getting ready to graduate. And while I was there at Henderson last week, I had an individual come up to me, an amazing human being, who said that she is not an educator, is not in the field, but she heard me speak and she's thinking about enrolling in education classes to possibly become a teacher. So I gave her my contact information, so fingers crossed that I will get an invitation to her graduation here in two years. So that's what I, I really love to do. Also, if we scroll down, I got the opportunity this past weekend to visit Princeton. So I was invited by the National Teacher of the Year Program, which is sponsored by CCSO and ETS. And they hosted Impact and Influence Conference for the 2023 State Teachers of the Year. So we had the opportunity to gain valuable insight for next steps and engage in discussions about the evolution of assessment and what that looks like in the United States moving forward. I also had the chance to tour the gorgeous campus of Princeton there and learn about its rich history because it's nearly 300 years old, so that was pretty cool. And if we go to our next page, during the month of October, Ms. Vicki Jewell, who's the mentoring coordinator at the Southwest Arkansas Education Co-op, and Dr. Nita Bohannon is the novice teacher mentoring specialist at Palasca County Special School District, extended an invitation for me to speak with some of their novice teachers. So I was able to talk to them and provide information about, like, continuing education opportunities and advice for the classroom, just tips and tricks about developing relationships with students and classroom management and communication and all the things that, you know, as a novice teacher, you kind of develop your own along the way, so. And then I was invited to the Arkansas State Chambers, the Associated Industries of Arkansas. So on October 19th, I was invited as a guest speaker to talk to the Chambers Leadership Cohort Class 18. And Mr. Henderson actually gave my introduction. It was so heartfelt. It was a special moment for me. I am the first ATOY to speak at the Leadership Cohort and I was able to talk about my background, my classroom experiences and my duties at ATOY. And that was just really special to me because it's very unique talking to people who aren't necessarily in education about education. And so I appreciate them sharing that. A lot of them have spouses that are teachers, which we love that and so they were able to relate. And in each of my board reports, I've been trying to do educator spotlights. So across the board in my journeys, I was able to connect with Ms. Amber Leighton. She was a 2023 Arkansas Teacher of the Year semifinalist. And she teaches history, so I went in her classroom and she was doing one of my favorite units about Andrew Jackson. So I couldn't help myself, so I jumped right in and spent some time with her students. I also met Mrs. Vernetta Sanders, who, this is her 44th year in education in Palasca County Special School District. And I posted our picture together on social media and people told me we're actually from the same hometown. So she's also a native of Helena West Helena School District. I mean, of Helena, yes, she's also a native of the district and she grew up there also. And then I have a couple in education, so I was able to visit the Suskies there at Harmony Grove, a sixth grade social studies teacher and a first grade teacher. And I love when you meet educators that are married. That's pretty powerful. I was accountable too. So that was this month, my, my experience in education this month.
Awesome. Thank you for sharing. We, we learn a lot from you and, and get to learn a lot about others from what you do. So thank you so much. Questions?
I love the teacher spotlight. That is such a great idea and a way to give recognition to some that, you know, may not otherwise get it outside of their own building. So that's awesome. Thanks.
I'd just like to say she did a phenomenal job speaking to the leadership group. It was certainly a pleasure for me to introduce.
That's awesome.
Thank you.
Ms. Rollins or Ms. Woods? Well, thank you for your work, your continued work and, and for sharing that. And we will learn from you some more as the month goes on. With that, is there any other comments, questions? Then we are at the end of a shorter board today.
Motion to adjourn.
A motion to adjourn in seconds? All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.